Four. This is a hybrid public meeting, public and attended, will continue to monitor online and I would ask that everybody who wants to speak this evening, if you're called upon, something that is not on the agenda during Audience or citizen, please raise your hand, we'll call on you, give us your name and your address, and we'll thank you for your statement. And I would ask that everybody, board members, staff, and anybody who is, wants to speak, or in attendance, whether online or here, be respectful in both ways, so. Please join me in our quick meeting.
I'm glad you did. You two are the one that approved my meeting. Oh, well, it's basically. Thank you.
I move to approve the agenda presented. Any conditions that anybody wants to bring up? This is just the board. I make a motion to approve the agenda presented, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you. I move to approve the Board of Select and Regular Meeting Minutes from June eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, thank you. Audience or citizen?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
State your name and address for us for the record. My name is Spread Wade. I live on forty-five, Cardinal Road, Long Beach, Connecticut. I've been a resident of Long Beach for going on eighteen years. I paid my fair share of taxes, and I have three vehicles registered in Columbia, a boat, trailer, motorcycle. That I've noticed lately at the transfer station in Columbia, that I've seen out-of-state vehicles with the Columbia sticker on their windshield. I don't even have no control over where they adhere that sticker to. But I think the transfer station is for Columbia residents' vehicles only. If they live in Columbia and they registered their vehicle in Delaware, which I saw in the eighty-niney thousand dollar pickup truck, they're skirting the taxes in Columbia, and they're using our transfer station. Last week, I saw Florida as a transfer station. The week before, it was in New Hampshire, as a transfer station. Now, I buy my transfer stickers every year, and I give my Connecticut license to the town clerk to get my stickers. I know you have no control over where those stickers are adhered to, but I think that you tend to control that out-of-state vehicles are not allowed to use the transfer station. They're not paying taxes on those vehicles, but they're using our transfer station. Put up a sign that says, "No out-of-state vehicles allowed." Charge of speed. A hundred and fifty dollars. I don't care. But you have the authority to put up a sign that says, "No out-of-state vehicles allowed." What's the exception if somebody rents a dual-trailer to clean out their mother's house, and she dies? That's acceptable. But for somebody that's driving into the transfer station with an eighty or hundred thousand dollar bid, and you know a pickup truck. And those trucks are just skirting the law. And they're not paying taxes to the town of Columbia, but I'm paying them. So I just want you to consider. Doesn't take much to put up a sign that says, "No out-of-state vehicles allowed." I don't know what else to say.
Well, I think you said it fine, so we'll certainly look into that. Thank you for your comment.
Appreciate it. Hey, there are individuals that work in transfer stations. They said they see it all, they see it all the time. Out-of-state vehicles with a blue sticker in the windshield using our transfer station. Have them bring their garbage back to Delaware. Have them bring their gathering back to New Hampshire. Have them bring their garbage back to wherever that vehicle is registered. But don't put it on me, I'm paying you back.
Thank you. Okay.
Yes, sir. Paul Powell's six son's flipper. I'm not going to put the agenda with the stuff now, let's talk about the flooding, the park on the lake. It essentially means, you know, on Monday, we had an update that was happening.
We have an update, we'll talk about, I mean, probably in the town administrator's book. Okay. Anybody online? Is anyone else on? Perfect. Seeing no other, move on, thank you. Oh, business, update on the Horace Porter School HVAC project and our resident expert.
Crystal. Okay, so, I guess recent updates. We are in the process of executing the final contract with our commissioning agent, I believe, right? With SCS. They got back to us, and we just updated it and sent it back, so we're almost there. So, so last weekend, we had a pretty productive meeting, which included representatives from civil practice selling associates, our engineering firm, Jim Russo, the project manager, and also Mr. Ernest Wallace, who's our point of contact for sustainable engineering and commission. So it was good, we had a good group of conversation. The strong package with our bid spec has been updated, it's been released to all of the young people to review on SCS, now I have access to those documents, their intellectual comments. SCS did commit to having their final comments to civil practice selling. I'll give it nine. Civil practice selling, we, they need a week. So essentially, the HVAC committee will not meet again at this point until the August nineteenth meeting, which is down by one. The commissioning agents will go through, provide comments to civil practice sellers. Civil practice seller would have had a week or a day or so, we could have any, to adjudicate those comments. We'll likely discuss it at a HVAC meeting here, and hopefully their minor comments that we will get through with the goal of trying to get this out of mid, just before the meeting. Few weeks behind, but I know our project manager is pretty positive, I think based on experience with what's going on. We received confirmation lead time for the switch here, ran it's about thirty-five weeks. So I think the plan, which we recommended of buying that separate from their instruction package, I think is still a good plan. And we are planning the bid is going to go along with a completion date of, I think it's what, August twenty-fifth? It's the Wednesday before Labor Day weekend, like, because I don't do it, challenging us, we done by September first, right? We figured we would do it the first, the last Wednesday, when, essentially when the teachers go back to school. Definitely, it's that, so that's our target, that's where they want it, or they moved it forward with the discussion more to July thirty-first completion, because the earliest from SCS needs more time to make sure everything's working. Right, right, to be sustained, right, they need to be completely completed, because the commissioning agent then has to come in, they need to do various functional testing, that's part of, a big part of the service they do. Not only do they have to determine that the specs and requirements of the air conditioning and heating units comply with state regulations for high-performance buildings, and also right, they come in and they do functional checks to make sure the balancing and all of the features that the spec requires, we need what's on the specs, so the functioning test, testing potentially will take a few weeks, so that's, that's where, to your point, we're targeting end of July for substantially completed, but then the functional testing will get us into it again, well before the end of December twenty twenty-five, and the state that we could still test. Yeah, so I think, I think we've got to, and I guess I would ask you, because I guess what I was thinking, once we get to the point where we didn't estimate the bid, Jim Russo, project manager, puts together his schedule and has project, I was gonna see if you wanted to invite him, so he could walk you on this, sort of through the schedule, and you kind of answer, you have your own questions to answer.
Yeah, I just wrote down, I want to see a schedule in print for the HVAC project. So that'll be, how we need you tomorrow, or anything else, that's a good point.
Yeah.
So I'll put together, bring it in, write a chart, and say, this is what we're looking at. Okay, thank you. Any questions, Chris?
Thank you, Josh. Thank you.
Uh, new business, set a town meeting for the tax and business incentive program ordinance, so we, as a board, voted to approve the tax and business incentive program, so I don't have anything written here, maybe it's time to make a motion, or?
Senior binder, there's an actual. We're combining it with the refugee. It's one legal notice to have thirty clauses.
All right. Okay, so. Who decided? Those, so seven point two, set a town meeting for the transfer fund from the general fund to the electrical upgrade and other potential costs for the Horace Porter HVAC project, we want to stay ahead of being able to pay for items that we're going to need, that come in a timely fashion, and talking with Mark and Ben, we're looking for still four hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars from the general fund, move it in there. This will all be, of course, continually tallied, we'll be able to submit for the grant when it comes sort of when it comes actually to us, or if we can prove the paperwork for that.
In our municipal lines, we see that we wouldn't be able to reimburse ourselves with these expenses out of bonding or short notes, if we choose, or we could decide we're fine, and we'll bond less, and use this words to account payment of the budget.
Okay, so we're going to combine this in one special town meeting. And you'll see, do you have, do you have to read this?
Yes.
Yeah.
And clause three, to approve it, clause two is adopted, not clause one.
Yeah. No. Uh, yes. Can you see that, everybody?
Yep. Clause one is adopted, one is to appropriate the chance for
But then it would be true.
Two is to consider adoption of those or any sales effects of business.
And clause three is in relation to clause two, is it not?
This is, so it said, it should be good clause two, is it not?
Okay. Okay, thank you, Lisa, good chat. Uh, so do I make my motion, and this is what it has to read? Or do I read this to make the motion there?
Just, they can move.
Okay, so this time, I move to set a town, special town meeting, August sixth, year twenty twenty-four, six thirty P M, at the Adelie Urban Conference Room, which is here, and to to read the duly qualified electors and voters of the town of Columbia, Connecticut, and any other person is entitled to vote on any of the matters contained in this warning, are hereby notified to meet in the Adelie Urban Conference Room, three twenty-three, Route eighty-seven, Columbia, Connecticut, on Tuesday, August sixth, year twenty twenty-four.
It's at six.
At six, or six thirty, six thirty P M, for the following purpose. Another type of where, clause one, to appropriate and transfer four hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars from the town of Columbia general fund to the H W P, or Horace W Porter HVAC Improvements Capital Account, Charlie Osser, ALF, number two zero six two zero six zero one five, to fund the electrical upgrade and other potential costs for the Horace Porter School HVAC project. Clause two, to consider the adoption of the code ordinance entitled Tax and Business Incentive Program Ordinance. And clause three, to approve, if clause two is adopted, that in lieu of publishing the full text of the town ordinance as required by section three point five of the town charter, a summary notice we publish instead as permitted by section three point five in Connecticut General Stat and section seven dash one five seven broadle, and that said notice reads substantially as follows, Tax and Business Incentive Program Ordinance. This summary is prepared for the benefit of the public solely for purposes of information, summarization, and explanation. This summary does not represent the intent of the legislative body of the town of Columbia for any purpose. A complete copy of the Tax and Business Incentive Program Ordinance is available at the offices of the Columbia Town Clerk and the Town Administrator, and is also available at the website of www.columbiact.org. So we're voting to accept these three clauses in a town meeting, my order is second, at six thirty P M. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Here.
Yeah, of course.
Okay. Over here. We won't sign. Anyone have any? Thank you. We originally. So you. Well. We might be three thousand four hundred and nine thousand nine hundred.
Okay.
Maybe at six thirty, August sixth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You know, she, I mean, so that's Mary, okay, it's turning most face bacteria in them. A request in LMAT for fourteen thousand seventy-five. We have a, we can.
Okay, so. Because the lake is the lake, and the life of the lake is important to all. There's been a request for additional funding for water for that investigation, for the health of the lake. And some of those great components. That's great. Mary, I'm not going on this, please tell me why we're here for this, please.
Mary, we're both representing Lake Management, that's good by President. Steve, you asked for some showing it out. Let me get up to the chase, we are asking for an investment in addition to our annual budget. The total is for three tasks, fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars. The reason why we're doing this is threefold. One is, if you know Columbia Lake, okay, we have identified inadvertently, I will say, our lake consultant for task number one, two areas that show a concern for high bacteria equilibrium. One area is, I've leaked it out, yeah? The inlet from Utley, what we call Utley Stream, up Lake Road, the major water inlet. Right next to it is a storm drain on private property that had, for lack of a better word, sludge coming out of it. Our lake consultant took a sample, and the Ecoli was off the charts. In addition, when we noticed that, we decided to look at some other areas that may or may not have the full. We looked at five other areas, one other area exceeded the level that the eastern highlands would allow from a sanitation point of view for use of that particular area. However, one or two samples does not make that you closed the lake, or that you do. It takes a success of number six sample to understand, is this an issue that was immediate and it went away, or is this an ongoing issue? So task number one, at the request from Eastern Highlands, is to do the additional testing of those two sites, which we are calling the drain next to Utley and a drain on Woodland Terrace by the Woodland Terrace Association, to assess if it's Ecoli, if it is Ecoli, and we look at those drains, and it's the, is it human, animal, what is on it? So that's task number one, we believe that's a health issue, and we hope that, obviously, the board select to support Eastern Highlands recommendation, to do that additional testing from July to October. We're going to try to get six additional samples. That's number one. Any questions related to that?
Do you think it's today being this, sir? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Well, she said, any question?
Yeah, no, I think she means the board. That's, I mean, it's just Robert's rules, we kind of go by that.
I'm sorry, no worries, it's the first time that I've ever been here, and believe me, I'm gonna continue to come.
And I didn't want you to respond to that, there are probably five other major things that may be issues before you even get to a candidate piece.
Okay.
And I can explain that to you, yeah.
Thank you.
Task number one, task number two. In twenty twenty-two, our lake consultant presented that our lake was wild, in really good shape. And twenty twenty-three, from a point of view of water clarity, our lake consultant has told us we're one of the most beautiful lakes in the state of Connecticut.
I agree.
In twenty twenty-three, however, we found a hiccup, and it's almost one of those, if you remember Apollo thirteen, Houston, we may have a problem. And we want to stay ahead of that problem, and it's called phosphorus. Phosphorus enters this lake from stormwater, from groundwater, from rain, and that phosphorus is rising. Let me give you an example of what that means, and why we want to assess the load, how much phosphorus is in the lake, and how much is coming from one, actually, two, two major ones. Okay, so. Phosphorus in Columbia Lake. In twenty twenty-two, when we initially measured phosphorus, we were approaching two hundred and forty. What does this line mean, in terms of, I think it's kilograms per year? That means that we probably are going to start to see excessive or additional good additional native plant growth, which we are, and we're going to start to see algae. Since twenty fourteen, we have seen algae on this lake, last year, pictures to show you was probably the worst in terms of algae. We did not measure in twenty twenty-three, but our lake consultant is pretty assured that now we are at or past two hundred and forty kilograms in terms of the amount of phosphorus this lake can handle. Where we want, not want to get to is a whole lake algae load, which is, give or take, four hundred and eighty kilograms for you. So, how can we start in a way that's financially responsible to invest in understanding? We look at the biggest phosphorus loading portion of the lake, and that's Utley Stream. And the highest phosphorus concentration ever seen by our lake consultant was the drain near Utley, which we're also looking, asking you for your investment for Ecoli. So is there an issue there? We have to go upstream, measure not only at those drains, but go upstream and try to understand what are the issues, and then have recommendations on themselves. Okay, so that's task number two.
Mary, I'm gonna ask you a question on that.
Steven.
Utley, on Utley Stream, Utley Swamp up there, the decaying over the years of the trees that have been there, the leaves that have fallen there, and then the runoff to the lake, isn't that part, a majority part of the problem? The decaying of rotted trees and stuff?
We are asking our consultant to go upstream and to give us that data that says yes or no. Maybe something is draining that we can stop. Maybe there is something beyond dead trees and a lot of plant growth in Utley Pond. Don't want to go there and speculate, there are harms, obviously, we are very harm-friendly and will always continue to be, and yet there are things that even agriculture can do that would help minimize if anything is going into the way.
There's also some very nice lawns.
And I, I
Lots of them.
I don't disagree that groundwater is part of it, however, we know the major part of it is stormwater drains.
Well, but if you put down, you're a lawn fertilizer, and we get three inches of rain, it now goes down the street into the.
And, and I couldn't agree more, Lisa, that's not only lakefront, that's nineteen hundred eighty acres of neighborhoods that come into the lake. So you're absolutely right, it could be that. Just so we know, what are some of the examples, these are from last year, now past this picture around of some of the algae, what we call patches. It was not the whole lake, but these in particular are, one is green filamentous, it's okay, one, it's not anywhere's toxic, but everything else we're looking at, that's more blue green, cyanobacteria, which can be toxic to people, and then we're facing health issues or closure. Again, we don't want to get near it. Okay, but that just gives you an example of what would be.
Sounds pretty fishy, young boy.
Great, coming out.
He has the things, when samples were collected, in, in relation to recent rainfall.
Yes.
So that would be an important.
Yes, we collect samples as, as much as we can, field samples of water quality are done on nice days, huge. Well, when we do stormwater drain analysis, and we've already done some within the budget that we have, and we did ten major stormwater drains in a major storm, you collect it right after that storm, and that's what started to give us the high phosphorus. If you compare apples to apples, in twenty twenty-two, our phosphorus measured from zero point two to about one, you don't want to go over that. We went from zero point four to one point. I think it was two, I'd have to get the numbers to you, but now we're at zero point eight to one point nine two. So we are starting to see the rising of phosphorus beyond what you would categorize as.
I agree.
That's task number two, task number three. There are ways to, and we will get recommendations from task number two, to mitigate or try to minimize phosphorus coming into the lake, there are also ways to take that load off the lake. The vast majority of that load is on the bottom of the lake. Phosphorus settles with sediment on the bottom. What used to be a very clean, nice snorkel, a lot with my grandson, rocky lake is now, it's still clean, but there's a lot of sediment and roughness on the bottom of the lake. Algae will come up with hot weather and help, and that's why we did the creation of these patches. So what we would like to research, and we looked at it, and looked at this years ago, and please speak up, what, current rate? LMAT looked at this years ago, there is a way to potentially siphon the phosphorus off the lake. It could be a very cost-effective way. Have that go over our spillway, and you're now taking water from the bottom of the lake, that sediment, and the highest amount of phosphorus theoretically off the lake.
Aren't you just sending it down the stream, man?
Thank you.
Yes, we are, as we did. Yes, we are. As we did when our dam pipe until 1980, we were always taking water off the bottom and sending it. There is a theory that, and I was in here then, when we built the pipe up to the middle, we're now missing taking some of that sedimental, but you're direct. So there you have it in terms of task number three. It's to do an assessment and research. How big a pipe? How much would it cost us to do? And would it be of value to reduce the phosphorus load that's in the lake? So we're looking at the major input up we stream is task two. Could we have a major output and take phosphorus, which is task three? That's what we're asking for the additional investment. We feel very much that this is such a wonderful lake and such a valuable resource, not only naturally and recreationally, but economically also. With the development that we've seen around the past 20 to 21 years.
So how many tests did they do?
How many tests?
How many times did they take tests? And when was, if it was only one, when was it taken? Was that a made test? Was that a two for the phosphorus?
Okay.
When was that?
Uh, we, we take six samples monthly from April through October, once a month. Five areas around the lake. That measures the clarity, the dissolved oxygen, the phosphorus, the nitrogen. The stormwater drains, we initially did five and expanded to 10. So we've done it twice to measure what's the amount of phosphorus coming into the lake.
Are you seeing that kind of, you know, is it, is it fluctuating or is it fairly constant through season?
What we're seeing on an annual basis, and I don't have the data for every, every month, obviously, or every time we've done this, is a definite increase in phosphorus coming out of our stormwater drains.
I would like to see that.
I'd be happy to. I'll provide you with a SharePoint connection when you see all of our. Let me live down. So I concluded with the task and the compensation altogether. And this has already been integrated and we're trying to do this before October because they're always coming out here and they're ready to come out here. But there are three tasks that total 14,700 dollars for lead investments.
The proposed timeline says June, July, August.
Correct.
We're already three months late.
So I spoke with our lake consultant yesterday and they're willing to gear up at the same price and get out here and do the appropriate testing for phosphorus load.
For three months, not five.
Well, they'll do it twice a month. They're willing to step up their plate and come and finish it all by October.
And based on Lisa's schedule.
But it's not the same gap.
It's not the same gap because June and July will have different gap.
Well, we haven't measured stormwater drains. We're measuring water quality every month. That's just typically what we do. But we haven't measured stormwater drains. So.
I thought you said you did it in 2020.
We did it in 2023. We have not done it in 2020. We, we, and I just saw it characterized it. We tested five drains. We increased it to test tenders to find out where the.
I thought it was times.
We did it twice.
And you would identify the sources that were inclusive and you can limit where you.
That's exactly what this investment is about. Let's identify the sources and what are the issues.
Tell the difference between being a fertilizer and you have a cultural source of your planting.
I'm not an expert. I can take that to our lake consultant. We asked him to potentially be here, but unfortunately he is not available. So on behalf of Almac, the motion is to please invest in these three tasks.
Yeah, I got a question. Last year, work need requested you do a supplemental to do some sort of testing, I thought with the storm or.
We did, we did it within budget.
We, we added it, we added to our budget last year to do supplemental stormwater testing. Now we're doing slightly different than just.
This is an analysis upstream of why is this coming out of our drain at this power?
So that was during the bike. I didn't mind last year talking.
So we always test for phosphorus, but there's more phosphorus now when you want to find out. We've pretty much now started to narrow down. We've already looked at 10 major storms. Storms. I mean, you go around the lake, one by the town each. It's kind of, things pour in. Actually, that one is pretty good. Woodland, Perdome, it's been a good, they lie. There's one. But the highest is still Utley and stormwater drains.
Well, certainly testing is valuable. I guess I would be concerned if any decisions or, or interpretation, maybe, you know, I mean, this is kind of a, maybe a different year for the amount of rain. So I mean, you know, comparing to the other years, I, I would just think that we would certainly take that into consideration. You have high levels. It could potentially be related to all the inches of the rain we got late last year or even through the spring.
Right. And we've had, I remember not a bit, not near probably because we were ever began. I can guarantee it. I played grandmother in the rain too much. I knew this.
Last year it was 12, about 16 weekends with that rain. This year, this year, we have 95 degree weather on a constant basis with less rainfall. So the question is, is the great, the lake, not, not, not by us manually, but by evaporating. We're going to have a higher phosphate level because there will be less water, but the phosphate will still be there. And the water will not be spilling over the phosphate drain. It will just be sitting, evaporating. So when we test, they're going to be higher in phosphates anyway.
But where is it coming from?
Unless, if it, unless it were just getting washed off and down into the storm. If it's a, it's a.
And then your question is.
That's why it's kind of key is for when the storm drains were tested, um, here was out in spring when, you know, everybody in the brother wants a green lawn, but they're all putting stuff on it.
It was more towards the end of the summer when we started to do stormwater drinking. And that's after we have a lot of rain too. It's not after we have a lot of rain, we can do it later on. I mean, there are variables. A lot there. I think it's a good idea.
I, I, well, I will tell you that I am inclined to go along with this, okay? But at some point, we have to say, it's the nature of the lake. Trees around the lake are young, they grow old, they die. They fall into the lake, leaves fall into the lake year after year. The swamp that feeds the lake has a lot of decay in it. It's carried down to there. I, I understand what you're saying, but every year I see me come in somebody who comes to us and says, it's not 14, seven this year. This year, we're going to test for something else. We're going to send divers down to see if it's bubbling out of something. It's going to be 25. And then it's 50 and then we have to, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm cautious. I'm inclined to agree with the testing here. Removing phosphorus from Columbia Lake. Labor $2,300, expenses $200. Labor.
Is the number.
It's like six scientists getting, putting their heads together, room going, and we could run a fact check. And $200 worth of fight. I, it's.
I think you have to measure the velocity. You have to measure the diameter. But I think there are a number of things. I am not a scientist, so I can't speak to the extent of what that would be. But I, I can tell you that in all our interactions with this particular lake consultant, TRC, they have always come in under anything we have asked in our previous consulting.
Why don't we get all those oversized boats with their stern to the dam, grab them up, let them out of the water.
That's probably what they is. You can get the information interesting thing in what the results are too. And what you're going to do to be their nap.
Lisa, do you have to see that damage before we vote on this? Because, you know, every day it clicks by.
I guess, I look at the lake. I mean, I was just sitting there looking at you. You go around the lake. Everybody has a wall in front of the lake. They have a lawn up to the lake. Everybody has these big luxurious lawns. Everybody's taken away the natural plants, the cattails, the irises with all those arrowloots, all that stuff is taken away from the edges of the lake. And then they want it clean. It's not how it works. It's not how a natural, natural lake is. The whole head is with plants that are filtering out and you consuming the phosphorus. That's what their job is.
I grew up in a lake like that and I'm scared.
So is it more important that we maybe, even if people took a little section of their lawn down pretty late and said, plant some bushes, plant some stuff?
Yeah, and I think every little bit helps. However, the main phosphorus load and quantity of water that we're getting is from upstream at Utley.
Possibly, yes. But I mean, you got to identify the source before you figure out what to do because maybe it's a simple source, maybe it's.
Okay, but in saying that, uh, I'm going to move forward. I moved to approve and authorize $14,700 from contingency for additional water investigation for Columbia Lake provided by RT, excuse me, TRC Companies. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Hi. Opposed? Four to one. Uh, I move to approve the September 24, 2024, for the today. Bike ride. That will fast move forward again with the six. Do this every year. Maybe not this, we do a lot. So this is secret. Yeah, we do this secretly. We have a. Wow, that's fair. So.
Long run.
Okay, any discussion on this? Mark, you look into the path and like.
Well, this, this I guess on the highway, you know, take this.
Do they take a ferry or like next one?
Probably five days.
More discussion, all those in favor? I move to approve the request to place a bench near the Veterans Memorial on the town green in memory of Russell and Marjorie Inzenga. We need discussion. All those in favor? Okay, there's a parcel of land off of Route Six due to Wardwood Road realignment. This is state realignment, state owned land. They want to know if we want to buy it. I move to provide notification to the state and Connecticut Department of Transportation that the town of Columbia is not interested in the sale of the state land in Columbia file number 030093005 Alpha. Discussion. We looked at this, I honestly don't think it has any value because, you know, it's residential.
It's residential, 2.1 acres. There's no, it's not a floodplain, but it should be a house if it's in, should be not town in my opinion. But planner didn't feel we had any use for it.
Yeah.
And put a little map.
Jagger Scouse, we, I don't see a lot of potential use for the town on this. And that, any other discussion? Although in favor to say we don't want it. We can get it more recovery. Well, you know what? He asked me about this three weeks ago when I said, I want to bring it to the board. Make sure they understand I'm not making decisions on, you know, because somebody will go, oh, that's a nice piece or whatever. I just, just really to make you know that this was brought up.
And the letter's not dated, so I have 45 days. I'm not sure what it means.
So it wouldn't have started. So the motion on the floor, all those in favor of not buying it. All right. Thank you. L B Jackson, vote horsepower guidelines. You know, by the way, when are we going to go over this? We have to, um, I know this is a big issue. I know there's concern about overpowered boats, even though guidelines are set up. I know people have brought in paperwork that says they've had it adjusted. There are some for it, say it works, some we can't say it doesn't. So I will ask that you are in Almac and subject matter expert to kind of go over this with us, please.
So when I hit your name and the minus place that we're in, Linkin Park West. I think that a motive on that that maybe they should read and maybe they could explain some of those points. So. So motive is to remind the Board of Selectmen of the town ordinance, our three safety regulations on Columbia Lake, section 190 dash 12 C, that no person shall operate underwater in Columbia Lake above with an uncoordinated horsepower consuming pain. Or above with an inward engine whose horsepower exceeds 150. Yes. As admitted by the owner of the chaperone question. Watercraft registered as CP4662BN possesses a 200 horsepower engine on the lake, which seats a 150 horsepower unit. The actual manufacturer of horsepower rating remains the government governing rule for this ordinance since 1995. The board's slapman was alerting the owner that the 200 horsepower chaperone CP4662BN must be removed from Columbia Lake immediately. If the watercraft stays on the lake, a fine of $15 per day should be assessed each day, thus for days on Columbia.
Yes, they're cut and dry, right?
I would think so. I mean, the question is, the modification that supposedly took place on the ball.
It's just one of the usual suspects. You know? So, no, is it one of our usual suspects? Is this somebody who? No. So I have a question. I have a question for you. Uh, you're here representing Almac.
Yes.
You're talking about oversized motors and engines that say, this is what it was built at. And owners bring it up and say, but I've got a letter from, you know, Mr. Mechanic saying to put a governor or restrictor plate or anything else on this thing. In your opinion, are there more than one or two boats on that lake? They have those guidelines skirted like that?
Um, so this is the only boat that's come to us with, that I know that has some modification in mind. The exception for it. There are others that are over the horsepower as well.
Okay, so I'm all set. As I sit here, well, open it up to the board. We'll have a discussion on this. I, I'm all set to take this and say, if this is what your engine was manufactured at, I do not care what paperwork you have. I'll hold it to you, okay? Because it's brought to us by owner. I, I, I put respect in your decisions. But there's going to be less boats on that lake next year. That's what I heard. So. Uh, board? And put on it.
You can't do it for one and not everyone. If you're going, if you're going to say you're up, then anybody who's over it and you can't, they can choose. How many boats are over? How many boats are over?
We don't know, but I think it'll be surprising, more than two. Okay, uh, you have to, go ahead.
So, if, in your one example, if I'm understanding right, it's been modified. Would it be an option, again, I don't know if it's possible for. Doing it, having the owner do their own dyno or whatever like that to actually manage, but it's truly been modified, right? And they can get justification in data that shows that it now was below, even though it says. Two hundred horsepower on the side and it's been modified downward, is that an option where that they could justify this in test? That we consider.
Wouldn't be confident that, you know, somebody could do paperwork for somebody that they know. Or they could do the test and change the configuration back.
Could be on them. Who's gonna test it?
So, um.
Chris, I didn't know this.
It's alright, there's dynamometers out there that will hit the date, I know the recite tell, we could tell the owner of that boat to have it tested, bring the paperwork, okay? But I don't have confidence in that, because they can make adjustments back, Mr. Powell, since you are.
As a member of all that. Speaking, saying this, we've discussed this at all, that's extended. Extensively, I mean, all the maybe modifications is, once the boat on the lake, you can take the modification on. So there's no guarantee that it's coming in best.
Right, thank you.
Restrictor plates and things like that.
That's the issue, so, yes, right, I'll let you speak, cause we kinda opened it to the floor.
I know, I, I, you know, I have a Ranger bad over a ninety horsepower. I fixed on Columbia Lake one time. And I was told that my boat was too big. So what if I unfold one spark load and say that it's only got seventy horsepower? Is that legal?
They don't.
Why not?
Because of the, because of the marine patrol then, says, okay, thank you, and five plugs away, and you plug on that spark load.
Well, and then they can, they can undo their restrictor plate and.
And that's what I'm saying, no, we agreed to do.
But it's twenty, you know.
We are, we are agreeing.
Okay, you're right, I would, I would like, you know, if you go back two years ago. To your Columbia magazine. There was a misprint. And I went right to recre- recreational department. Because they said that if they up the horsepower to one hundred on an outboard motor. And I ran over there to get a permit to put my boat on Columbia Lake, I live in Columbia. They said, oh, that was a misprint, please look it up. Because it was in your Columbia paper. Okay, but. I don't see any difference between a hundred and fifty inboard. Or a hundred. Horsepower outboard. What's the difference? Explain to me this. What?
Guidelines that were established, I mean.
What is the difference? I mean, you, you know, a hundred and fifty, four, a hundred and thirty five horsepower inboard. Is gonna go a hell of a lot faster than a ninety horsepower outboard. You're gonna be able to tow two or three Ford skiers at a time, and all I wanna do is fish in a pristine lake that I live in.
Thank you, Mary.
Hi, you're like we're thirty four, also representing L Mac during our discussion. And in a discussion with people who are literally dynos and restricts with plates, et cetera. Not only said can you remove them, but also said if you return them, you're opening Pandora's box. That's now two hundred, could be three hundred coming on this lake, people will try to put things on this lake, and I guarantee. People in the town of Columbia who will do so, and instead of what maybe five people who are that we're working on. Will become a hundred of both.
Very good.
So please, please, let's not open Pandora's box.
Okay, about this town beach access in this, what is, what is this about?
I don't know why. Well, that's, oh, that's different, yeah, I don't know.
What, who, who, for now?
It should be a separate.
It was brought to our attention that the. Number of people going to the town beach after lifeguards go in, increase. And, and then, and I mentioned last meeting that it's been going on for decades.
Yeah, so. I'm too proud, I'm pointing behind it, I don't know, I don't know, yes.
During, very good, bringing up the drive, Columbia. Um, in the town of Lake, for ninety years, and so did my family. And when the lifeguards are home. Safety issues is very, very hot, I, we're at high risk for drowning, ever drowning within, I believe in nineteen thirty nine. No lifeguards on duty, our last drowning was fifty five years ago this June. After six o'clock, no lifeguard on duty. I was, my first drowning on the lake was my own. The second drowning on the lake I was present for, and found the young. I sit over there, pass the code, and watch it goes on over the beach. At five minutes to six yesterday, there were ten people lined up. Standing over on the boat on charity, waiting for the lifeguards to blow their whistle and say everybody out of the water, they walk up, they walk down. Fifteen minutes later, another ten people, maybe ten or fifteen, came down, put their beach blankets down, put their umbrellas up, and swam like dirt. The risk factor, someone drowning in there is extremely high. Sometimes the parents are down in the water, sometimes they're not, sometimes they're racing down the pier to link cartwheels. And if not, he's going to be in a big trouble if this happens, because you all know this is happening. I have a solution, and I'd like to present it, is that like state parks that close at eight and stuff. Why don't we have lifeguards on duty till sunset? And then we lock the gate, just like they do with state parks. That way, those twenty five or thirty people that came down to the beach last night and didn't pay their five dollars per day. Would have to pay, I can't even assure you that these are town residents, because many times the, the different language that I'm hearing coming over on the beach. Okay, I wanted to know what's going on, they could be from Columbia, it could be, I don't know.
Well, I was down, I was down in, in response, I went down there that week at six o'clock, and there wasn't town residents down there. That I knew, they spoke up at the meeting, um, okay, yeah, I, I didn't understand.
We have no one last year, we can't expect marine patrol to patrol the lake. Sanwash the beach. But we do need some type of. Lifeguard in there and then close the beach, at eight thirty, that probably goes, and then another. And at eleven o'clock, another whole new. So they're over there, all frightened, I don't think there's any gates that's gonna.
Mr. Powell. Then go down to the beach and announce, in five minutes, the gate is gonna be closed, the gate to the parking, and then lock the gate. That doesn't, you need, they can't have access to the town on boat, but at least a major parking lot was closed after marine control. And then I think. Um, two people down in the lake.
So I, I didn't. I, there was a whole bunch of lake without lifeguards.
Right.
With little kid in, on rafts, playing in the lake without their parents watching them, and.
You can't stop it.
I, I just.
We do have signs that's from your own risk. No lifeguard on duty.
Gone on duty, so that your own risk. It's, I, I don't. I don't see.
That makes a good discussion, we hate that about it.
It's a good discussion, but people, you know. Would it be traffic, I mean, we put a thing out there, yes, be careful, but I used to love. Of going down there with my kids after six, when you're a whole lot less little children. Because the parents with little, little children, bring their little children, when the lifeguards are there, and say, why aren't they next? And, no, it's just more if something happened, they'd have a lifeguard who had some safety and stuff. I would go down there with my little older children and hang out with them, and we would play, and there's a certain amount of freedom and. You know, as an adult, I'd rather go down where there's not five hundred real.
Uh, how many big pan proud was actually larger today, that was during the job. The parking lot is full.
Well, you know, a lot of people get home at work, and then I barely have my parts there until eight thirty, until sunset. They close the beach there, I think, I understand, but what I'm saying is then the little kids continue to be.
We will, uh, we'll. Talking about this, you want, I don't want. Okay, excuse me, yeah, you got a stat motion.
I did, Mary Reckles, I. I understand and agree, it sounds like we're gonna table this. And have a discussion, could we please go back, we did have a motion from L Mac on the boat, boat horsepower guideline to remove the boat, and it's like. We would ask the D O S to, we have a sense of urgency about this, because people know that this boat is illegal. And one of those three.
So would be my recommendation to the board that we, uh. We follow the. Ordinance.
You like it?
For sure, I think, so I can actually read it, but we follow the guidelines that we put forth, and we ask, we demand that this boat be removed.
But I think you need to make an effort to remove every boat, do this to every boat, that's, you can't just.
I understand that.
What does that mean?
No, we agree, we agree.
Means they can't, it means they can't alter the horsepower on a piece of paper. When they, when the bench, and it says, for the manufacturer's standards of the engine is X amount of horsepower, if it's above.
There's a piece of David on there.
No, it's not, it's gonna allow me to, uh, nothing's good enough.
This is a picture of that engine.
I saw it, I saw it. But you didn't, what else, but, but the other thing you didn't provide was the notice saying it was, uh, from the A and S Marine. Saying that they put a restrictor plate on it, and his title that says, his registration with the state, that says a hundred and thirty five horsepower. Even though it says two hundred, so I'm just telling you, it happens, but this is what we're going to go by, thank you. Okay, anybody disagree? Right, and we will believe, there are changes coming. Right now.
I'm just afraid that, how come you're signaling me out, this is a vendetta, I mean, you can't.
Yeah, I understand that.
Would you actively consider raising the horsepower limit on an outboard?
No.
No?
No. We've been through that, eight meetings and, no, that's a change.
Lisa, yeah, I think they've kind of assessed the other boats too, in the.
I drove around Columbia Lake the other day and I saw, I saw boats out there with two hundred horsepower, and it was done.
Well, this particular boat is twenty one feet long, so that was a clue right off the bat, that it's overpowered, because then. A hundred fifty horsepower.
You have to get it up.
Twenty six foot speed.
Right, right.
So that was a clue, there are other clues out there, um, there are a couple of jets, jet boats on water that. I have, um, the, um, spec sheet, and they don't come with, they didn't come with one fifty five, a hundred. So, I did, there are, many of them have two hundred, and they're fixing.
They say they control, they control the lake all the time, but I don't think they're doing a certain amount of damage. I don't.
If I may.
Last one.
We do have guidelines in place to inspect every boat before it's in this life, including its engine, not just the emergency station. And all the safety regulations, some of these, for whatever reasons, got through the launch. And were not assessed appropriately, we do need better guidance at the launch. The whole is doing their job on the lake, they are identifying, they know they exist. But you can't, you gotta take the handcuffs off of them and let them do their job. Job has to be done at the launch, whether it's the recreation department or marine patrol.
So there's no hour? Along or the key? That they can put or the key?
Yes.
So, yes, Michael.
That was my, thank you, believe me.
Springtime will be a lot different, okay, I should have followed the advice of, of one or two on the board that said, for the safety of the lake. Well, I made a mistake. You can write it down, I made a mistake, we will make changes, believe me. Uh, that owner will be notified, and then there's a couple more that we'll look at and make sure that they're within regulation. I'm there, Molly? You have many, many of those guidelines, yeah, okay. Okay, I recommend that we follow the guidelines, all those in favor? Okay. Thank you, that's alright, I'm kicking off the book. Well, we don't have to go to number eight, Columbia Lake and dam and the beach, and. Pointing some resignations, so, everybody knows that Dan Johnson has moved on, we, uh, interviewed a number of candidates. Mark and Beth, and then on the final interview, I was brought in and sat down with Mr. Peter Dunick. And, uh, I gotta tell you, I'm, I'm delighted to ask the board. To authorize us to hire him as a facilities manager, so I moved to. Hire Peter Dunick as facilities manager for the town of Columbia discussion. I think this guy, he came here and just. I, I told him the worst, I mean, honestly, I said, you're gonna be snake in toilets, sewer lines, you're gonna be called on Saturdays, and this is gonna happen. The town is taking steps to help by advancing our. Flush lines or our piping and make changes, but you're gonna get called, and we're gonna do it at this price, and, you know. And he said, I'm your guy, and I believe it.
Yeah, I asked where he lives.
He lives in, uh, London, still aware. Any other discussion? All those in favor of hiring Peter Dunick? Both, great. Lee, uh, you'll see there, Lee Osborne resigned from the Columbia Board of Education. And the resignation of Katie Wilt as the community social services coordinator. So Katie has also moved on to another position, um, we haven't got to get her for. She's gonna be just fine. We are working with Bernadette, Mark and I, Jen. Uh, I'm working with Bernadette to come up with another fix for the social services over there at the scene panel. And, uh, we'll, we'll. Work around, we're having, we're involved in it also, but, uh, we're gonna have a. A look for another one, or a different way of getting back some.
Possibly outsourcing some agencies, you know, could support us, and bring some things in.
Uh, town administrator report.
Um, we just. Seems all we do is, um. Constantly train our employees how not to be scammed by cyber warfare, that's becoming a huge problem nationwide, uh, criminals are. Throughout the country, all over the world, they're getting really good, it used to be easy to spot a fake email, now. English is improving, and their punctuation is improving, and it's, yeah, unbelievable, AI is probably often. But right now, there's, this is the new guidelines, it's a part of the state for cyber incident reporting. Uh, so we're creating through a safety committee, emergency manager, we're creating what to do. Uh, and we actually practice with Kerma and, um, Notice inside. That I took a simulated course as if we just got active, but the town got held hostage, and they won the race. Uh, so we went through every step that we have to do, revaluated, uh, before we took each action. Uh, so we went through every step that we have to do, evaluate it uh before we took each action. So. The town's trying to stay safe and. And we've, we've had attempts, hits, we've uh avoided them and we're still okay. And uh.
I don't know, maybe that happened yesterday.
Well, yeah, Red Park, that's it, thank you, Steve. Had a bizarre incident, obviously, it was a. Young family in Red Park, the only ones there, the child was riding his bike around the edges of the park. They were just gearing up to go home. Uh, two gentlemen you've seen on the news on Channel Three with the mother today at one. Uh, they came out of the woods, I guess they were searching for profit and they had machetes. And they came running at the young couple, they jumped in the car, called nine one one, police said, please get the license plate. So they were able to get the license plate. We told police how the car was setting, the state troopers activated immediately, come. Arrested two men and processed them down to a get. Uh, so it's just. This is just bizarre action, um. Hopefully it's never happened again, but it really has. With. According to. You never know. Are we making part of the. Oh, 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 yes, so. There is a TARP from, it was, we were notified, I got hold of our inland wetlands uh agent Isabel. And she just sent an update. And it says. I checked her email, I was able to get in touch with the property owner of the TARP, it's a fifty by twenty foot TARP, it's on the end of the dock. Uh, it would be a hazard to voting swimmers. I would, I would imagine the goal of maybe reducing weeds near around the dock. But the owner's been notified, has sent a reply, which I'm reading. And I will be meeting with the owner later this week to discuss the permitting process and his plans in greater detail. So. The ill wetlands agent is investigating to see what, why the TARP is there. He is moving.
But but why would she put investigate your plans on the, on the use of the TARP? That's, that's the town's lake, not their lake.
Right, so you should apply. And it is called a Benthic blanket if you do it correctly, but that would require. Illwetlands approval. And that's a blanket that is black, it's porous, it smothers the plant growth on the bottom of the lake, but it would have to go through inland. LMAC would have to go through inland, probably a worse like its approvals, the whole process.
So what happens if somebody like Fred there wants to fish in between the docks and that TARP is there?
But now, especially at night, he's trying to catch his motor.
What's their force?
We're not. I think it was the block someone to reduce plant growth.
No, why can't I put my boat on Pondo Lake and just do the electric power?
Let me, let me tell you the. If I may. Plant coverage around the lake. Usually in shallow areas, five to twelve feet. It constitutes about thirty acres of the lake or eleven or twelve percent of the lake, but look where it's located. It's native to the lake, it's okay. However, it tickles the feet of swimmers. And this particular person is trying to take and kill that plant. Which could impact your ecosystem of your lake, your aquatic life, et cetera. Without permits, that could include up to deep in the United States Army Board, depending on how large an area we use. We've been through this before, I've already talked to two lake consultants, one expert from uh Connecticut. Deep back to Greg Buggy, who Mark and I worked with extensively. And this does not work. They have a surface blanket. The sun will go through it, the water will go through it, it's not gonna work, it should be removed. A Benthic blanket is better. But you still need permits. However, I have to agree with you, Steve. It is not our personal property, because I happen to live on the lake, that I can do whatever I want with the lake water. And it's no one, and no one's personal property, and I think that person's.
Does anybody?
Well, the water doesn't belong to the property owner.
Thank you, yeah, I agree.
Okay, you know, if I want to fish around your dock, I can fish around your dock.
Excuse me, sir, I'm sorry, we can't have open dialogue.
I'm sorry.
Can I?
I, I'm, I'm new to this. Okay, but I will, I'll be here on one of the six.
Excellent.
Has anyone talked to her about it and see whether?
Judy, we shouldn't be having a comparison back. Cause I'll never get out of. Especially if. Anything else? Okay, um. Correspondence. Connecticut State Two for Troop K for Town of Columbia. Once again. Last stocks.
He gave up more than.
What?
He gave up more chickens than he.
They did, whoever. Verbal warnings, twenty-seven ribbon, twelve. Low cap top fifty-one. Ballot practice. We're putting that on the agenda next one, and that's in two weeks, okay? I wanna talk about it a little bit more. Um. Thank you, Leonard. Somebody sprang into action, it was Mister. And then uh, I went down to the Columbia hosting a improvement for EMS and firefighters. They did a fantastic job. Unfortunately, there was not a lot of people there who had interest in joining the fire department. Too bad. And we got a nice correspondence in here about the first concert we had. It was uh amazing. A lot of people attended and please remember that the next one is August thirty. Is that correct? July thirty.
Oh, and June Blair is gonna be um, this Friday, right? Uh, cause they got rescheduled. Okay, here on the green.
Somebody.
We assisted.
So we, the Fourth of July, great, a lot of good feedback on it, everybody thought it was great. I thought it was also, if we tightened it up a little bit, it would be good. Uh, Aroncho, and then, and I wish to commend Anika. They should think, Anika does a nice job down here. And I go down there and I do, once in a while, I go down there and I observe the lifeguards also. They're attentive, they're doing their job. They look, they look the park, um, they're asking people for their. Identification if they needed or face path and stuff. Uh, I'm always pleased when I go down myself. And Anika's. The panel and that, who she is doing a very good job, thank you. Budget. I moved to approve transfers totally in thirty-nine thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars. What's that? Ben, you wanna talk about any of these or just regular?
Your end, um. Yeah, all the. Chander when things around, there's one that's um, for contingency for six thousand four hundred and twenty dollars, that's for the. Denver coffee concepts. Some of the big ones that are, that are have to do vehicle repairs, um, ability reading. Over, uh, could be a change in. Positions and then there was like all the last for a while.
No, anybody need more yet? All those in favor? I, both, thank you. Uh, I moved to approve refund, thirty-one hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty-six cents, presented. All those in favor? I moved to approve payment of bill totaling three hundred eighteen thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. Consuming a twenty-three, twenty-four emergency, twenty-four, twenty-five emergency, all right? Twenty-three, twenty-four regular, twenty-four, twenty-five regular credit card and paychecks.
So maybe you're choosing the twentieth.
We'll put in the power pressure. On the toilets and fix the pipe.
But I talked to Bernadette and they had no problems with anything, correct?
Yes, yes, they have.
They have not had fun.
And. I mean, today I thought what? We've got a lot of.
And and some door issues. Door, door, yes, and our.
Where are we on the roof?
We had a letter, we had a leak in the fire. It's being fixed. And we also, the boat house, all the materials got delivered, they're down there.
It's gonna get sharp.
Momentarily. I, I think they're just figuring out some things about it.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of paying the bills? I think both, thank you. Audience, citizens, yes.
Yes, sir, and. So they have fees more than probably they were on chat with friends. Has chat with friends been informed?
Say, no, we haven't been in the book. We're just gathering this from. Talking to the mother that this happened to, uh, the police have not released anything to the official.
This is preliminary information.
Right, so once we have a special release, which I expect to get tomorrow, I'd be happy to. Help you in notify them.
Thanks.
Well.
Anyone else, anybody online?
Uh, no.
Do you know whether a board member comments?
Concerned. Did we make kind of report of the usage of the um, EV charger the means of. We, we do get a little income statements.
So, so there's got. I will say, we've got a lot of dollars, but alone, he's kind of made about two hundred dollars in time, three, four months. Um, charge first on February. Um, trying to track down why they haven't paid us the money yet, because they're changing. So I'm trying to get that book. Both been about four hundred, they're not highly used yet, I think some of them are advertised on their website. It's not my usage, so.
I thought we weren't getting any money for five years.
I think that would be very good, but I don't.
We're, we're putting money away for future repairs.
Yeah, so we have. Separate fund for that eventually when we, we have to do a maintenance and fixing.
And we cannot use that. The town. There was something weird about that for three years. We cannot, we cannot take it as profit, we can put it into an account. Just for repairs.
This way, it's not.
Let's not wait for state's money. Or Jackson.
Anybody else? Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to suspend the uh regular meeting and go into executive session. And I ask uh, Mark to join us. You, anybody else? Uh, no, thank you, thank you, everybody. Thank you. Get to uh. Leave the, leave the executive session and resume the board's selectmen meeting at eight forty-six. No action was taken, no action taken, I move to adjourn. All those in favor?